We're good.
I was listening to all the exercise program and I got a little worn out. I had a few kind of settings ran in place for a few minutes. So now let's go.
Yeah, whatever. Well, I tell you what, Tom is beating us. I think right now it's six miles on a bike. It's kind of
Can we get there? That's what I generally do every morning, too.
Do you?
Yeah.
On a bike?
It's elliptical.
Oh, elliptical. Okay. Six miles. Y'all are my heroes.
Well, my body stood up.
I'm gonna have to step my game up. About three miles walking was a pretty good thing, but
Well, it is.
No, it isn't. Look at y'all.
I didn't tell you how fast I was going, you know?
True that.
You're going slow. You're going slow enough to fall over on the
Absolutely. I want to make sure I see the scenery.
That is funny. Well, speak speaking of walking, there's Dietra White. I wonder if she's been doing any. I know Peggy, she's just joining. I'm sure she's in shape this morning. So.
Hey, what are you doing? What were you what were you yakking on me?
Oh, that the guys were just saying how they do six miles every morning and I do three whenever I can. Three walking miles. They bicycle an elliptical six miles. And I was just wondering what Dietra does.
Well, I've learned how to string barbed wire fence.
See, I told you she's gonna come through for us.
That's work. I've done that.
I didn't like it and I don't think I was cut out for it. And in fact, I'm headed down there as soon as we finish up here.
Wow.
Manual labor. I did mow my front yard last night. Does that count for anything?
It does, Dietra. It counts for team us. Mm hmm. Because the guys are beating us right now. We got we
I don't know. That barbed wire fence thing that ate my clothes? No.
Okay, we we win. Okay, that's all I need. Okay.
Your six miles does not put holes in your jeans or your shirts.
Okay.
Or your hands.
I had gloves on. In good shape.
I can't believe you run fence and then came home and mowed the grass. You're my hero.
No, fence was sorry, fence was last week. Yeah, no, I didn't do all that in one day. I'm not. I'm not that. No, no. No, not going.
All right, it is 10 o'clock. Is everybody here?
I don't know. I'm here.
I'm here.
Counsel, I've got Reverend Shelton is here with me, Philip and Cindy at Council Chambers.
Good morning.
Morning.
We'll go ahead and call a meeting to order. If you would, please bow your head. Father, thank you for staying. Father, we thank you for the beautiful weather that you've been giving us. And Father, we continue to pray for those affected by coronavirus. Father, especially our neighbors in El Paso and our neighbors in Amarillo. Father, we just pray that you would be with them and that you would heal their communities. Father, please be with us as we make the decisions in the city. And Father, may we may we make the decisions in accordance with your will. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Number one, consider a resolution accepting appropriating grant funds from a Walmart community grant. Chief Alvarez.
Good morning, Council Mayor. This is a consider a resolution accepting grant funding for Walmart Community Grants Team Facility 537, operating these funds to Odessa Fire Rescue. We received this is actually the second grant that we received. The first one was 5,000. They send us another one on behalf of Walmart Community Grants and it's in the amount of $2,000.
Everybody good?
Yes, awesome.
That's great.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Item two, consider a resolution authorizing the City of Odessa to apply grant funds to provide partial payment for bulletproof vests. Chief Gerke.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have been a part of this grant program for years and what it does is just help us. It helps us replace those bullet resistant vests as they wear out. A vest has about a five year lifespan, but also understand that with turnover, we we lose some the use of some vests because these vests are custom fit. So the grant funds would be $40,400 and the city match would be $40,400. And that match will come from that general fund account that is set aside to match specifically for grant matches.
Everybody good with it?
I'm good. Yes.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Item three, consider the purchase of roll off trucks for solid waste. Philip.
Counsel, Mr. Mayor, this is into items to consider the purchase of a roll off truck. This would be a replacement truck. Last year, Unit 3802 was towed in a vehicle accident and the city received insurance money for that in the amount of $129,924. The department is budgeted for six vehicles, but we've had another unit go down to mechanical issues. This now has us at four. So we're needing to replace the unit that was towed last year. This is not a budgeted item for this fiscal year. However, we do have money within our capital replacement account. We will be utilizing the insurance disbursement as well. The total purchase price is $199,593. This is from the Big Truck Rental Group, which is a purchasing cooperative from the U.S. Communities contract.
And how much you insure?
Five, consider appointment of boards for CRMWD. Mickey Jones and Dan Holman. I believe Mickey currently serves as chairman of CRMWD and Dan have they have both been on there for quite a while. This is a very specialized board because it deals with water restrictions and water laws, and they've served very well. It's great to have Mickey as one of as our chairman. That's needed to happen for quite a while. So he's worked his way up to that. So.
They're both okay with continuing.
Yes, ma'am. They're both good with it.
Okay.
So anybody?
I'm very fine with it.
Okay.
I'm fine with it.
Yes. So if we could have a motion on that and we can get that reappointed done today.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Norma, did you get all those seconds?
Yes, thank you.
There were six seconds, but you know. Out of six Corona Relief Funds Presentation, Michael.
Good morning, Council. I hope everybody is doing well and everybody is safe. You'll hear two presentations this morning, one for me and one from Marita. These are both related to the CARES Act, which CARES Act, which is the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act. That is the over $2 trillion program that was recently passed by Congress for the purposes of aiding workers and families, assisting small businesses, preserving jobs and aiding providing aid rather to state and local governments. So this is the aid to state and local governments part. Within the CARES Act, there exists a a special allocation called the CRF or the Corona Relief Funding Act, Corona Relief Fund. The State of Texas received $11.24 billion of CRF dollars. The Act, the CARES Act, provides that 45% of those dollars be available to local governments. So therefore, 6.5.06 billion dollars will be available to Texas local governments. 3.2 billion of that has already been directly provided to six cities and 12 counties within Texas with a population of more than 500,000. The remaining 1.85 billion dollars will be distributed to cities like Odessa and Ector County with populations of less than 500,000 persons. There is a formula that the government used and it's essentially $55 per person. City of Odessa's allocation is estimated to be $6.6 million. And that is for the portion that's entirely in Ector County and the small portion of the city that lies within Midland County. Ector County itself will receive an estimated $2.6 million in funding. The City of Goldsmith receives $14,000 if they choose to to pursue that. The the CRF does allow for 25 20% of the funds to be immediately dispersed. In the case of Odessa, that would be about $1.3 million that we could access almost immediately. There are a couple of requirements, a few requirements, rather. One of the things you'll see later after this presentation is a resolution resolution asking for your authorization to allow me to submit an application for the funding. So we'll need to have that resolution in place. We, the city, of course, will need to accept it's the grant terms and conditions. And I will tell you that this is no different than most grants that we get. There are accounting requirements. There are audit requirements. There are procurement requirements, anti lobbying requirements. All of those conditions have been reviewed by the city. There will need to be a grant application executed once the application is accepted and the funding terms have been returned back to the city for its execution. And one thing to remember with with the Corona Relief Fund, and then you'll see this throughout my presentation. It can only be used for items or expenses related to COVID-19. And in this case, it'll be for any expenses that occurred between March 1, 2020 and will occur between, rather, up until December 30th of this year. Broadly, the CRF eligible activities are those that are necessary expenditures due to the public health emergency COVID-19. Expenses that were not accounted for in the most recently adopted budget. And I can tell you that I don't think any of us, when we adopted this year's budget, thought we'd have this to deal with. And so, and once again, it's only for those expenses that occurred on March 1 and up to December 30th of this year. There are specific authorized uses for the funds. First is medical expenses. COVID-19 related expenses for public hospitals, clinics and similar facilities. And I will let you know that hospitals have received some portion of funding already. So you'll have to think of this as a multi-pronged approach by the federal government when it comes to the CARES funding. So hospitals and other medical facilities will be receiving some dollars, especially those public hospitals. And again, the city does will receive those dollars. These are among the things that you could consider utilizing the funds for. Moving on, expenses for establishing temporary medical facilities to increase COVID-19 treatment capacities. So if we had a major breakout, this is you. You saw this most recently in New York where they set up essentially field hospitals. Funds could be used for that purpose. Costs for providing COVID-19 testing, including antibody testing. So this may be one, again, another thing that the council may want to consider to perhaps enhance the county's efforts to test, perhaps a more targeted testing program that could be directed at those individuals that are most susceptible to this disease. That's a consideration for us. Emergency medical response expenses, including emergency medical transport related to COVID-19. It's expenses for establishing and operating telemedicine capabilities is also eligible. There are a series of public health expenses that are eligible. Those include expenses for communication and enforcement of state and local health orders, expenses for medical and protective supplies for first responders and other essential workers. And I will tell you that the City of Odessa has spent tens of thousands of dollars on PPE for our frontline workers. So those are things that we will be submitting for reimbursement on. It also is eligible for expenses related to disinfecting public areas and other facilities, expenses for technical assistance to local authorities and other entities on the mitigation of COVID-19, expenses for public safety measures undertaken in response to COVID-19, and also expenses for quarantining individuals should that should be necessary. It is also specifically authorized for payroll expenses for employees whose primary work is dedicated to the mitigation or responding to COVID-19. Devin, can you go up on one more slide, please? So those categories of individuals will include our our public safety officials, our public health human services and other similar employees. Next slide, Devin. It is also specifically authorized to facilitate compliance with COVID-19 measures. So expenses for food delivery to residents, including seniors and vulnerable populations, expenses to facilitate distance learning, including technological improvements in connection with school closings, expenses expenses to improve telework capabilities for public employees, expenses of providing paid sick leave and paid family and paid family medical leave to public employees, expenses for maintaining prisons, county jails, including sanitation and improvement improvements of social distancing measures, expenses for care of homeless populations provided to mitigate COVID-19 effects and enable compliance with health precautions. It is also eligible, the funds can also be used rather for expenses for providing economic support in connection with COVID-19. So it can be used for expenditures related to the provision of grants to small businesses to reimburse the cost of business interruption caused by COVID-19, expenditures related to state and state or local government payroll support programs, unemployment insurance costs related to COVID-19, public health emergency, if such costs will will not be reimbursed by another federal program under the CARES Act. And then finally, a catchall. Any any other COVID related expenses reasonably necessary to the function of government to satisfy the fund's eligibility. And I will tell you that we are now getting just now getting information on what will what ultimately we can use the the money for. There are still a lot of questions. I think the federal government is still developing its policy for the use of funds. So as that information continues to come in, we will make sure that we are following necessary rules and regulations. There are things that the funds cannot be used for. They are not eligible for expenses for state share of Medicaid, damages covered by insurance, payroll benefits for expenses and expenses for employees whose work duties are not substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to COVID-19, expenses that have been or will be reimbursed under another federal program, reimbursement to donors for donated items or services. It's not eligible for workforce bonuses other than hazard pay or overtime. It's not eligible for severance severance pay or legal settlements. There is one final requirement. The State of Texas has chosen to require that 75% of the funds must be spent in categories of medical expenses, public health expenses and payroll expenses for employees substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to the public health emergency. And as I mentioned earlier, this is not unlike the other grant programs that we did. There will be property and procurement requirements as well as audit and record keeping requirements. I have visited with our staff specifically the fire and police department about expenses that we may have already incurred related to COVID-19, but also to begin to think about what other items might be necessary in order to be in the best position possible in order to fight this disease. I will also be working with with our staff to reach out to agencies that might be eligible for funding under this, under the, under the, under the, this particular act. Also, we are, and you'll hear a little bit about this from Marita. We've already began discussion discussions about designing a program with the assistance of local health officials that will be targeted to those populations that are most vulnerable in our community, specifically the elderly. As you all know by now, the fire department has been tasked with testing all nursing homes and they're doing a great job of that. I think that that is going well for us so far. But but what we were initially thinking is that there may be a program we can design to take this sort of mobile testing directly to those populations that are most impacted by this disease. The next step for us shortly after my presentation, you will consider an item that would provide me the ability to execute any necessary documents association associated with the application of other associated for the application of coronavirus funds. That is the end of my presentation, Council. I will attempt to answer any questions that you may have.
Michael, on the grant that the governor has instituted for the fire department to go out to all of the nursing homes this week. And that is that is being reimbursed by the state, another program, right?
So I and Chief Alvarez can assist me with this. I think the state is is asked us to do that. I don't think that they provided any specific direction on reimbursement. But Peggy, one of the things that Chief and I talked about, if there is no funding from the state available, we can certainly use this fund to reimburse ourselves for that cost.
That's exactly what I'm thinking. I mean, that would be something that certainly we could do. But I was thinking that might be an overlap. I thought the governor said, or I thought I read that there was going to be some other type of reimbursement, but maybe not. But definitely that qualifies under this.
Chief Alvarez.
Yes, sir. Yeah. So so when we had our conference call with Chief Nimkid with the Texas Division of Emergency Management, he said to be to use those funds that that are available. But if if we didn't have any funding, then the TM would would reimburse us at some point.
Something happened, but we probably shouldn't plan on it anytime soon.
Just and just to give you an update, Mr. Murrow, if I could, real quick. We did test Sienna yesterday nursing home. And we we tested 50 residents and then we tested 69 employees. And today we're doing Darren's nursing home. So we're we're making a hangway on this. And I can tell you that, you know, we've got six, seven nursing homes that we we were required to test licensed facilities. And they've given us till May 25th to get this completed. And I'll tell you, our neighbors to the east of us, they're they their medical director, director decided not to do it. So at least we're kind of ahead on on this a little bit and they're doing a fantastic job.
I know. Please, please thank them on behalf of myself and the council.
Yes, sir.
They decided not to do it?
Midland decided that a medical director decided not to do it. So Midland Fire is not going to do the testing.
Okay, I know they're being tested. I thought you were saying they were not going to do that. I know. My daughter was tested yesterday. She works in
Okay, yeah. So the fire department is not doing it. It's my understanding. I'll talk to the fire chief.
Okay.
Michael, Cindy, one thing that I would really, really encourage is this goes back to March 1st. And I hope that we go back and find everything that we can have that we can possibly get reimbursed from that standpoint for the last 16, 75 days. And so we get 20% now. And you mentioned something that is it an application process, too? Do we have to send something to the state for them to approve?
Yeah, Dewey. So it's simply a submission. It was included in your package. It's simply it'll be this this resolution that you will approve. And one page essentially agree initial agreement that we will send off to the state and that money should be deposited into the city's account.
Right. And that but you had mentioned earlier that that we may try to see if this would be okay to be allocated on or this. So we still are these, you get $6,631,240. So can we use that as long as it fits within these categories? Or do you have to have the state approval?
So Dewey, it is my understanding from my conversation with with the state that once you we submit the the coronavirus relief eligibility certification, we will, we will get that money directly at 20% into our account. And any cost associated so far can be reimbursed. Any programs that we may design to mitigate COVID-19 moving forward would also be eligible. And it would simply be work like most of our other grant programs. We'll expend it here and the state will reimburse that expense up to that amount, Dewey.
And that's great. I just want to know the rules because I promise you the rules are changing every time we turn around on the PPP funds that were a part of the CARES Act. So.
Yeah, this was set up by the state a little squirrely, to be honest with you. The largest, the six largest cities with populations over 500,000 have already received all of their funding.
And they didn't have to qualify for anything.
Didn't have to qualify. I'm sure they'll follow the same rules, but they've already got theirs and we have to go through this process.
That's the part that I'm concerned about. We need to make sure we get every penny in, buy whatever penny we can get. I know we will. I'm just saying that.
When does the other 80% happen?
If I could, Councilman Shelton had a question and I'll repeat his question. He asked, why did having to be our best utilized? And as I mentioned, we are, we'll, we'll be reaching out to agencies that might be able to partner with the city in order to make sure that we're hitting the benchmarks that the state has laid out for us. And then we'll begin to talk to you as a council about a more targeted testing program that might be beneficial. And then finally, as I mentioned early on, I've asked both Chief Gerke and Chief Alvarez to evaluate their operations and make sure that if there's any possibility to use these dollars in response to this disease, that we we begin to think about what those might be. And so we can make sure that we're getting that those items in place so we can then purchase them and utilize the funds for that purpose.
Michael, can we use this to increase our mask and everything else? I know we've off a system, you know, maybe six months reserves. Can we increase that maybe to a year with this?
Yes, sir. I I now the funds are specifically authorized for the expenses related to PPE. So the short answer to your question is yes, sir.
And Michael, if, I mean, it would seem that we will between March and December certainly have programs where we could use the whole $6 million. If we did not, if if we didn't out of pocket do that through the city, it would, my opinion would be that we would definitely want to go with the talk with the hospitals because they have just done such great service and they're not going to get reimbursed for everything they have. I mean, it seems like by partnering or showing that appreciation like on the, you know, the emergency operations center when it was in effect and all those kinds of things that there should be, we shouldn't leave any money on the table, I guess, is what I'm saying.
And that's a good point. And one of the things that you may have noticed is this is also available for small businesses. So again, we're going to reach out to as many categories might be eligible and look for partnerships. Because you're right, if we don't spend it all, Peggy, the money goes back. It never gets used.
Yeah, and you know, under the Perryman Report, the other day, he talked about how critical it was to support our businesses, our local business, to keep, to help them through this time. So that really seems like that has some merit as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so would we need to go ahead and authorize you to be able to execute the documents?
Mayor, if you'll move on to item seven, it's a consider a resolution.
Wait, before we do, I've got a couple of questions. Can you add the administrative cost to this program as part of the program? In other words, it's going to cost us, Cindy had a full time job. Phil had a full time job before the pandemic. It's going to take some effort on on your administration's part to keep up with all of this. Can we include that cost?
Tom, we certainly, we will certainly capture all the costs that were associated with the EOC and everyone's time that was involved in that. And to and to further answer your question, I believe we can because as I mentioned, there's a catchall that allows for any COVID related expenses necessary for the function of government. So we are going to ask for clarification from the state on that. But there is a strong indication that those might be eligible as long as they were relegated or rather directly attributed to mitigation of this disease.
Were there funds given to the county as well as the city?
Yes, sir. The county will receive about $2.3 million, I believe. 2.6, I'm sorry.
Is that based on the $55?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so all of the nursing homes, as far as I know, in the county are within the city limits, right?
I
Yes, that is correct.
Yes, sir.
There may be some independent living facilities, but the nursing homes. Now, does this include independent living?
No. As far as for the testing, no, it does not. Right now, it's just licensed nursing facilities.
Okay. Okay. All right. Okay, that's, we can move on now, Michael.
Item seven, consider authorizing the city manager to apply for and execute all necessary documents. Michael's already gone over that. So do we just need a motion to do that?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I will, I would just simply say if any of the council would like to talk specifically about their thoughts, ideas on what we can develop, we're certainly more than happy to sit down with you and discuss those.
Sounds great. Last item is CDBG Care's presentation.
Mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Reverend Shelton had a question. You didn't talk into the mic, sir.
This is Reverend Shelton. I just need to ask one question. I know some of the churches already opened up at 25%. Now, since the governor is saying that some facilities open up at 25% on Friday, they're able to open up at 50%.
Mayor, Mayor, I would suggest perhaps if you call Reverend Shelton, that's not specifically on the agenda.
I'll be happy to.
Thank you.
Sure. All right, Marina, it is yours.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I kind of wanted to give you a little update. We've had a couple of meetings since your last presentation on the CARES Act. I kind of wanted to go over a little bit, just.
Feedback.
Are we okay now?
Yeah, we're better.
Okay. As you know, we're going to get 514,553 dollars for the CDBG CV program. And the type of projects that are eligible are public service activities, special economic development assistance, public facilities, planning and capacity building, as well as technical assistance. We had a meeting with some of the agencies and Michael and Phillip and, and I met and discussed some, some activities. And we wanted to give you kind of an overview of what the, the agencies are seeing out there as being needs. One of the big needs in the public, most of them are public service activities to begin with, is testing. And in testing, the funds could cover the cost of supplies, PPE, and costs of the test, disposal of medical waste. We could do transportation to get people to the site, or we could do a mobile unit to go to various sites. This would be good, a good, we already know we're doing nursing homes, but the funds could be used to reimburse the costs of doing the testing at nursing homes. We could help with assisted living facilities, do Angel House, and also go to tax credit apartment complexes. Those would be some, some areas that would be beneficial for us to be able to use some money to test.
Could everyone put themselves on mute while, while Marina is presenting? And then when you have a question, unmute. I think that would help with the echo issue, please.
Go ahead, Marina.
Okay. Another activity, what we've seen as being a major need is assistance with food, especially for the elderly and the disabled. We could also do like a food pantry in a low income area or at a church in, or do a drive-through at a park for, to provide food assistance. Aid assistance has seen a large increase and people falling behind in their rents and unable to pay their rent and utilities. That we've had at this office, multiple calls of people wanting to know where to go to get help. So that's another big issue that we have seen. There's also been an increase in homeless people needing mental, needing assistance. We've seen more single people needing the help, the homeless. But also there's been an increase in families with children who need help. You know, taking, there's also taking into consideration that these are needs that the city already has established relationships with some agencies to deliver. We see that food assist, in food assistance, Wheels on Wheels is currently going to have $11,000 short by the end of September. They will have utilized all of the CDBG funds that we have provided for this program year. They have seen, they have seen a 28% increase in need of people coming in to get assistance. That is a presumed benefit which helps departments to administer the funds with as much technical assistance. Family Promise has also seen an increase from families with children. An established network that deal, that helps move families through the homelessness, homelessness to homes. And this also is a presumed benefit. Odessa Links, they already receive refunds, HUD funds for rent, for rent assistance and getting people into housing. So they would, they already are familiar with the HUD funding. And what we're looking at is trying to find, because of the, the capacity of the department is limited, we only have two people that deal with the grants. And so we've got the, our regular CDBG funding that we're, we're bringing to council on June the 9th for allocation. We also have this funding that we need to bring to council for allocation. So we're, I'm trying to look at the capacity of the department and also provide some guidance of what may help us be able to get the funding to the people that need it and to be sure we're administering, administering it properly. Sorry. Also, on our application process, if you could go back one. We're asking for direction on how you want us to do our application process. Do you want us to do open, open applications and have agencies can submit a request for any type of project that would qualify? Or do we want to limit the applications to the specifically identified types of projects like testing, food assistance, rental assistance and homeless assistance? This is just a really brief overview because we, we really need direction on which way to go.
If I might make a suggestion, one of the things that I think would be of extreme benefit to us as a city, as well as to a council, is that, you know, there's a lot of things that are, are coming into play with, with government aid, et cetera, et cetera. I, I think it would be a benefit, excuse me, beneficial if we maybe formed a task force to help with this. Because, you know, guys, you already got to run the city. You've got your own projects that we've got coming up. It says, as you mentioned, Marina, we got the CDBG funds coming up next month to look at. And these are extracurricular and I sure think going back to somewhat of what was said in Perryman's report, we need involvement from the city as a task force to maybe undertake these objectives and make sure we're getting the proper publicity on it as well as we're helping the people, the proper people. I don't think it needs to fall all on y'all's shoulders, if that makes sense.
What does everybody think about the idea?
I agree.
I think Dewey can share it.
I'll be more than happy to.
I'll be glad to work on it because I was sitting here thinking that this, this needs a lot more time than what Marina has right now.
Yes.
Well, I'm, I'm willing to work on it myself too.
I agree with you, Peggy. That was the reason why I think it's something that, you know, we don't need to rush through this. We need to make sure, and y'all, don't get me wrong, we're not. But I'm saying that we, that you and your day-to-day duties have other things that, you know, just the operations of the whole, the whole city, as well as the CDBG funds that we do have coming up. And this needs time and attention to make sure we're properly getting it to where it belongs, as well as time to sit down with council and say, here's what we find and go from that standpoint. But that's what I'm thinking, anyway.
It's kind of like the United Way due diligence. I mean, it's something we can do from the outside to, to have a good understanding of what each one of these groups could do and then be able to explain that to the rest of council and get a recommendation.
I think that's exactly right.
I agree.
We are on a deadline to expend the money by September 30th. So we need to keep that in mind.
Okay.
Problem, I probably should have learned how to spend it.
Okay. We need to keep Marina involved, you know, since she does have, you know, she doesn't have to be hands-on at all times. But I know that she can quickly identify some of the things that we may have to search for. So I think it's important that, that she is involved, if not just to run things by her. I don't, I don't mind serving on the task force or not, but what, a few of the things that I'd like us to focus on is, you know, as Michael, I think, said last time we met, duplication of services to make sure that I know all agencies need everything, but we have to make sure that certain agencies don't get everything. We have to consider the homeless. I think the remote testing in areas where people are not able to get out and test, I think that's an excellent idea. So I'd really like to on the task force and not, I'd like to see that continue to be a part of something we look at. And something else that we might consider, and Marina would have to tell me if this is possible or a part of it, but we have some mental things going on, COVID-related, you know, when it comes to families and their children and them getting the help that they need because I guess of the stress brought on by all of the COVID aspects. So I, I'd like to make sure that we at least consider those areas. Those, those are to me really important, as well as Wheels on Wheels.
Uh, one of the, one of the things we have to remember is you have to, you're going to have to income qualify people if you're going out to the general public because it's got to be a benefit to low mod citizens or, or a low mod area. So that's one of the things you're going to have to keep in mind. And that's one of the reasons I'm, I put in there the presumed benefit because there are certain categories of people who are presumed to be low, uh, low mod. So when you go to those categories, you don't have to collect all that data. So that, that streamlines the ability to get the, the funding out to the people that need it. And it lessens the, the burden on the office as far as doing application intakes and verifying income and things like that.
Right.
Then also, it's also limited to, within the city limits. The people have to be within the city limits to receive funding too.
Right.
And I think Marina, it would be really important for, for us, for you to realize that we would just sort of be your extra hands and eyes and time, not, certainly not to replace you. You know all about this, but, but there.
I was just bringing up the, those are things that we need to take into consideration when we look at, you know, projects.
Right, I agree.
And I did not disagree and I agree entirely with what Peggy's saying is that we need to involve, we need to, if we can involve the council as much as possible to where we have small representations, where we don't have conflict with open meeting and we can help you in that way. We can help Michael and Cindy and Randy and, and Phillip and the means that we can. That's all I'm saying is that we're going to.
I would love that.
Right.
I would love that. I wouldn't take as much help as I can get right now.
Right. And as far as the rest of it too, because, you know, we've got to concentrate on the day-to-day operations that we're going to have a different, a different city because of. And so that's where the time and attention needs to be from there. We as council can maybe help with the rest and, and do it in a representation state where we do not have conflicts with open meetings again, and we just have a few from council and then report to the whole council when we can and, and take it forward from there. I don't want to lose a penny from anything that's been offered by the government.
Absolutely.
That is my biggest pet peeve right now is just make sure we, we play the game, but we get everything reported and hopefully we can help y'all get.
When's that deadline again, Marina?
We have to have this money spent by December 30th. I'm, I'm thinking if we have it encumbered, like under contract with whatever agencies, we'll be okay. But I need to verify that. That's still kind of up in the air.
Okay.
But if, like if the, this is a curve before December 30th, we're for sure good.
Right.
Counsel, given your direction, we will, we will set up a meeting with Dewey, Peggy and Reverend Shelton as that core working group. One thing I do want us to remember, we might want to narrow where we want to provide that assistance. Because as Marina indicated, the more different types of projects that you have, that's just the more work that we have to do. And also remind you that CDBG, for those of you that have been around a while, it is very intensive in terms of documentation that's required. Agencies have to submit a considerable amount of paperwork. So that's one thing to consider. For any agency, they might want some, there's going to be some strings attached, given that it is CDBG.
And I appreciate what you're saying, Michael. And I think that's the reason why we need your guidance and Marina's guidance is what do we do to least affect you as far as your job and paperwork where y'all can concentrate on the day-to-day functions within our, within our city. That's all I'm trying to say. So we're here to help and hopefully this will get us to that point.
Okay. We will, we will set up a meeting with, with you guys and we can start talking specifically about both of these funds.
Sounds great.
I really appreciate the, the input and all the help that I can get. I really do.
We're glad to do that. What we're here for.
Okay. And that brings us to the end of our agenda. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank y'all very much.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all.